I'm sorry, John is going to be late.
Okay.
Turley is transpose lower.
Yes.
Do you need to text somebody?
I texted folks.
Oh, we have three.
She doesn't count towards the quorum. Um. Yeah. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, you have a quorum of the planning commission, so, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's a planning commission meeting. There's no actions being taken, so it's not a big deal. Yeah.
No, he, it's his 25th wedding anniversary.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm holding down the fort.
Okay, so I.
Uh, to me.
All right. Well, it's 5:02, so we'll go ahead and call the September 10th committee of the whole meeting. Um, so before we start with the good of the order, we're letting you face this, we don't all usually get together, so I'm going to start over with Sarah, and we'll just all go around the room here and introduce myself, and you can just say like your name and what you are.
Okay. I'm Sarah McMillan, I'm the new city clerk, I started in December of last year.
Laura Thomas, community development.
I'm Chelsea Shapiro.
Do we have a better, microphones in the room?
You can't hear?
It's not great, it's really good by you, but not great by everybody else.
Okay, let me try a different one.
Okay, can you hear better now?
I can hear you great.
Come on over here, I'm on the other side of the room.
That's much better, I think, Mayor, Mayor, you're hearing pretty good?
Yep, I'm hearing much better now, thank you, Dan.
Thought maybe it was just me, thank you.
This is better for sure, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Right now? All right, do you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Chief Dubois, please. Steve Taylor, please.
Amy McHenry, I'm the mayor for some of the councils, Jennifer Anfman, I'm a council member.
Richard Shaker, council member.
And I am William Chapel, Chair of.
And then our virtual guests, Commissioner Bradley.
Commissioner Bradley, on the planning commission.
Great. Mayor, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Amy O'Carlander, Mayor of Duval, apologies for not being there in person, a little under the weather with this kid at home tonight too, so keeping you all healthy.
All right, and then who else, if you want to introduce on?
Oh, we can introduce Larissa.
Okay, Larissa, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, Larissa Grundel, City Engineer.
And Daniel also, Daniel, would you mind introducing yourself?
Yeah, absolutely, Daniel Kenny, City Attorney.
Thank you, and our other two, are they with the?
Yeah, they're with Champ.
So we'll just do that when we go, okay, all right, so anything for the good of the order today? Yeah. All right, so we'll just quickly do our review of the regular meeting agenda. The council members, did you have anything on the consent that you had issues with or potentially wanted to pull, or are we good with all of it?
I'm good.
Yeah. All right, quickly moving along here, we'll just go to our first discussion item, which is our workshop, why we're here with the Duval Planning Commission on transportation planning, I'll hand it over to Director Thomas.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of our audience, and our scout, and obviously our police department. This is really the kickoff of our 2024 periodic update for the conference of plan. We thought we'd just come right out of the gate and start talking about transportation, so we'll talk not just about transportation in general, but like the process, where we're at, things that are, that might be new, if you noticed in the back of your presentation, there's some terminology too, because we do have new like planning commissioners and even new council members, so it's kind of like a little glossary as well. I will be here to help answer questions along with Larissa, but I do want to introduce Transpo is our consultant that we've been working with for probably about the last six weeks, so we have Patrick Lynch from Transpo, he is the planner, and then we also have Brent Turley, who is the engineer on the project, and Patrick and Brent, are you ready to roll it off?
Sure, yeah, um, did you, do you guys have the slide deck there, or should we share our screen?
Um, go ahead and share your screen.
Okay, let's see if I have the power. Let me know if you see it.
We can see it.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and start sharing.
Okay, how does that look, everything let go, okay? So, um, yeah, so we'll, we're, we're gonna do an overview of the transportation element, kind of what it is, the process for updating the plan, what are kind of the requirements for getting the plan certified, both at a state level as well as a regional level? What, what are some of the, and as we come out of the pandemic, what are some of these trends that are impacting transportation, and how will those things be addressed in the plan? We'll talk about some of the tools that we'll utilize to help illustrate kind of travel patterns and kind of how the system is performing, and then we'll do a, a kind of an overview of the, the financing program that's part of the transportation element, what's involved, and well, just to kind of give you an overview of how everything fits together. So. Um, I'm sure as you're all aware that the transportation element is just one chapter of your comprehensive plan. It highlights the goals, policies, and then the kind of the core components are a a 20-year list of transportation improvement projects, the costs of those projects at a planning level, and then a financing program and how the city plans on implementing its long-range transportation improvement plan. So the, the way that we've structured these plans for a lot of agencies is that there are core kind of components of a transportation element that you can think of as more of a, as an executive summary that fits within the kind of the context of the comprehensive plan, and then there's a companion document that's the transportation master plan that can, that contains all the nitty-gritty detail. The analysis, there tend to be more maps and that, and it's kind of more of a supporting backup document to the executive summary in the comprehensive plan. And so I can explain some of that here, but these, these are kind of some of the things that are included. So there's kind of a context and, and you know, the comprehensive plan kind of pulls to, in other kind of sub-area studies, quarter studies, smaller traffic studies, and kind of uses them as kind of background and context. We examine how the system is currently performing, we do a thorough existing conditions, both inventorying facilities, kind of where the ped and bike facilities are classifying the, the road system, analyze the performance of the, of the street and roads system, and then that provides kind of a nice basis for getting into the forecasting and terms of where is growth going to be occurring, and how does that relate to traffic on the roads and pedestrian and bicycle trips and transit trips as well as well, and freight and truck movements are included also. We talked a little bit about the financing program. And we'll get more into detail on that later, but there's because the, you know, the transportation system is really kind of a spatial component, you know, that there's a lot of maps that we use to describe the transportation system, and so these, these are kind of a list of the different types of maps that we'll be including, I won't go through the whole list, but you can see that there's a lot of different things that we'll be illustrating on a map, and what's nice about the, the maps is then we can kind of overlay these things on each other to see how they relate to each other. Kind of where there's opportunities to integrate the modes into multimodal improvement projects where we have several kind of priorities and kind of different roadway corridors. Brent, and feel free to add anything that I might be missing with some of these. So one of the things that's kind of new that we've been working on is traditionally the, the plans have been more contained in these static documents. As I was just describing that, you know, a lot of what we're doing is kind of mapping facilities in both kind of existing conditions as, as well as kind of where future priorities will be within the city, but the technology is changing to where we can create more interactive tools for communicating that information with these online maps. So this is something we're hoping to do and continue to do, we've started to build some of these online tools for the city, but this transportation element update provides an opportunity to continue that and create more interactive mapping tools that allow you to select different layers, click on different objects, and you know, see the data that's underneath. And so you don't need to be a technical person to use these tools, you know, that we've created them so that they're very accessible to, to people that, you know, similar to like how a Google Maps work, something very simple, but a lot easier to understand, zooming in and out and layering the, the different layers to kind of see how the, the different relationships between kind of the different projects, existing conditions analysis, as well as like, you know, land use, future growth and, and all of those things. So, um, I'm going to talk a little bit about the, the planning process and kind of what are the different components in when, you know, that are fed into the, the plan update, and how does it fit within the, the, kind of the larger context? And so this little pyramid is, you know, hopefully illustrating how the city's transportation plan fits within kind of the greater context here, so you can see at the bottom of the pyramid, we have the different modes, and sometimes these are, you can think of them as either modal plans or just components of your transportation plan, they're, you know, both the the needs, the projects that help support these different modes, and then that's built into a citywide transportation master plan that then supports that comprehensive plan, and so that, this kind of lower end of the pyramid is all kind of local planning, but that fits within the umbrella of county-wide growth targets and planning policies, and then even at a higher level within the fourth county Puget Sound region, and then finally the state's Growth Management Act, so as we're developing the plan, we're kind of developing that common thread that runs all the way up through the GMA, but as you get lower into the, kind of the, the city's transportation plan, there's a, a lot more detail on the local needs of the transportation system specific to Duval. And so that, I, I think as a kind of a theme of the transportation element, that's kind of what we try to get across is that consistency with the, the goals, policies, even all the way up to a statewide level.
And the other thing to comment is, needs to be consistent within the other elements of the comprehensive plan, so like, for instance, the land use forecast needs to be consistent, the land use plan needs to be consistent with the transportation plan, so we're not using different growth targets than transportation plan than what's in the land use plan, so the, the, everything within the comp plan needs to be obviously consistent as well.
And I think that's a really important point, because I think a lot of people think of the transportation plan as sort of an independent, you know, part of your comprehensive plan, but it really, you can think of it as just an extension of your land use plan. Like it, everything that, you know, the transportation improvement projects are there to support the land use vision and growth strategy, and so that's, you know, that, that's where we start from. Is this kind of, I really think in it, of it is kind of integrated into everything else that's in the comprehensive plan. And we'll talk a little bit here about the levels of service, and I think it's coming up here pretty soon, so this is just sort of a high-level chart on kind of the sequential process for how we update the plan, so as I mentioned before, we were going to be looking at existing conditions, and so there'll be a thorough inventory facilities and with kind of updated traffic counts and other data. We then use that information to update the city's travel demand model, we'll talk a little bit about what that tool is, but it's a forecasting tool that forecasts trips based on the city's land use plan. We identify improvement projects to support that growth and to mitigate any of the impacts of that growth. There's goals and policies that kind of are throughout the planning process of kind of another set of tools for supporting the types of projects the city wants, you know, that are consistent with the, the vision and kind of how we want to qualify success for the city, so, you know, multimodal improvements, safety improvements, it will include capacity improvements where needed to mitigate growth impact, so policies to support those initiatives, and then ultimately that's packaged in a document that clearly lays out the, kind of the analysis, the findings, the recommendations, and all of the maps that kind of go with that as we've described.
Now, we, we, we do show this as a sequential process, but there is a feedback loop, kind of that third and fourth kind of icons there, depending on the policies, depending on the type of projects, you know, may, maybe the, the projects that are kind of coming out of the needs assessment or the scenarios aren't the projects that the city is envisioning or wants, and so that might dictate some changes in policies, and we'll get into that a little bit with some of the slides talking about level service.
Yeah, and then some of the other policy updates too, we'll talk about a little later, related to changes in kind of both state and regional policies that, you know, will want to be consistent with. This little diagram at the bottom of the slide kind of illustrates what I was talking about before, kind of that layered that layering of the different data to develop the analysis and the, the priorities, so we can see how things relate to each other. As we identify projects, we want projects that aren't kind of singularly focused on one thing, you know, where, you know, we might see opportunities to improve ped and bike and, and truck movements, there might also be safety issues and other things we need to consider, and so that's the power of kind of the mapping exercises to draw upon those relationships and really focus our efforts in the areas of greatest need. So levels of service, and I guess I do, I want to, if there are questions, you know, don't hesitate to ask, we don't necessarily have to get all the way to the end before taking questions, so but levels of service, I think there's a, I think people, most people have probably heard of the concept, but I think this is an area of the plan that gets misunderstood often, and so essentially what levels of service is, is just a way of defining success, like what, what, what does success look like, and how do we qualify that, and so this little chart here has this A to F scale, and then these images are, you know, you can see sort of, you know, very light congestion at the AB level down to the more, more congested, heavier congested roadway and at the ENF end of the scale, but that is really kind of an oversimplification of levels of service, but this is a way of kind of thinking about like what a level service A means versus what level service F means. But there's different ways of measuring levels of service, and the Growth Management Act doesn't dictate how agencies should measure their level service, and and so that's why you'll, you'll see that there are different methods implemented by different agencies, because each measure or methodology kind of is looking at different things, and there's a kind of a saying that what you measure is what you get, and what that means is that if you're really focused on you know, roadway capacity, the projects in your, in your plan are going to be roadway capacity projects. If your, you know, measure is focused on intersection delay, you're likely to get, you know, bigger intersections or turn lanes, things of that nature, vehicle miles traveled is a, you know, I won't, it's not necessarily a new method, but it's one that's getting more traction in some communities, and that's really, think of it almost as how a utility is measured, the amount of the system that is used is, it's what's being measured there, so, but these are all different levels of service methodologies.
And they, these, these are focused on, or these are examples for vehicle, there's also levels of service that you can do for non-motorized, you know, your walk and bike networks as well.
Yeah, more agencies are including these other modes in their level service standard, because as I was mentioning, what you measure is what you get, a lot of communities have, and their goals and policies, projects, or kind of, you know, a, a vision of creating a more walkable, bikeable, safe environment for those modes, and so to help implement and then identify those projects is including those modes into their, their performance measures. And so it's, and it's something that's called out by PSRC that, that, you know, and at the state level, they, they encourage agencies to start to include other kind of modes in their level service standards. But this, this slide here is to kind of show that when the, this kind of A to F scale was developed, I think it was a way, you know, it was used because it was intuitive to people, people recognized what an A grade was and what an F grade was, and so it was trying to simplify these kind of technical concepts into something that would be meaningful to people that aren't traffic engineers, but I think what that has also caused is this sort of a misunderstanding of what, you know, these A and B levels of service mean, or what an ENF level service means, so so you shouldn't think of it as like a school grade, like a level service A isn't necessarily a great thing, I mean, that means it's, the facility's probably overbuilt, right, that there's lots of capacity A on that facility that's not getting used, whereas uh, something at a C, D, or F scale of the level service spectrum is more utilized, potentially more right-sized for the demand, even though it's a little more congested, and so I just kind of point this out, because as we get into updating the plan, we're going to have discussions on, you know, both levels of service and how we measure it, as well as kind of where we set our standard at, and so this is just something to think about that that it's not a report card, it's, it's really just a way of kind of assessing how a facility is used, so Brent, I don't know if there's anything you would add to that?
No, I mean, it, it is about metrics, and we're trying to define the metrics that, that matter to the city, and it will again, prompt projects that make sense for the city, you know, when you're thinking about your transportation system, if you want a cost benefit, you know, the greatest benefit for the cost of a project, you actually, that, that D and E is the most utilized of a system when you're talking vehicles.
Well, and we'll get into how this, this, you know, we're kind of identifying what the pieces are, and then hopefully this
Exactly.
We'll get into how this is all kind of fits together, so I wanted to show this too, because this is another part of, uh, I guess, kind of the misunderstanding of certain things, and we're going to be using different terms like transportation impact fees, concurrency, developer, frontage improvements, and then even SEPA, which is the State Environmental Policy Act, it, it's an environmental review of, that's another development review tool, but we highlight these things because as we identify the long-range transportation plan, we'll identify that some of these projects are going to be implemented through different means, not all of it will be a CIP project, some of it might be constructed as part of a, you know, as the city is growing, kind of a growth pays for growth either through mitigation of, of development or through funding through impact fees, things of that nature, so when you're thinking of concurrency or impact fees or these other development review tools, there is kind of, they, they all kind of connect, but they, they cover different things, and there's kind of a different focus, so I, I won't go into great detail, only to say that you're going to hear these terms, we'll be discussing them, and they all have kind of a different role within kind of developing the transportation system.
And it, and it's all related, this development review and all this is related to the implementation of the plan, so you, you have this future plan, you put, you say, this is how we want our city to look like, there's a bunch of different tools for implementation, and, and there's different ways, different policies to enact, to enact that implementation.
So, um, another kind of way of thinking about this, and that we'll discuss in the transportation plan, is about what we call balancing the plan, and we'll get into this as we discuss concurrency and levels of service, as we discuss the project list, as well as the finance plan, and how this kind of, this kind of part of the, the plan works is, you know, as we are identifying levels of service standards, both in how we measure performance, as well as where we set that standard, that will help inform our list of projects, you know, as we, you know, if we have a very strict standard, there's going to be more projects, and, and likely more expensive projects. And then the other side of the, the equation there is how will we fund those projects, fund and implement them, and so as we're developing the plan, there's this sort of iterative process of making sure that we're creating a project list that kind of meets the vision of the city as well of has a financing program that's realistic and is within the city's means for for funding this, this plan. So these things aren't done in isolation, they're sort of done as part of a process and that, that's what this is kind of hopefully illustrating is that this is, everything's connected and we'll be discussing these relationships as we're developing the plan. So we'll get into, you know, the requirements that we're kind of planning under and that's one thing that'll happen not only with the transportation element, but your comprehensive plan as a whole will need to be certified. And so there, within our region, there's kind of two kind of points of review. There's the Department of Commerce at the statewide level. And then there's the Puget Sound Regional Council that also certifies the plan. And essentially what they're looking for are kind of specific things that show that different parts of the plan are consistent with these regional objectives. And so we'll, as we're, you know, as we get into the planning, we'll be consulting with PSRC at the very beginning to kind of lay out kind of what the requirements are, how we plan on meeting those requirements. And as we get into drafting the plan, you know, going back and kind of coordinating with them, showing how we're doing it to make sure as we get to the end of the plan, there are no surprises. And that, you know, hopefully it's a smooth certification process. But and let's see, I think the next slide might have a kind of a better, now I'm going to go back to this one. So there's a within, you know, there's the growth management, as we discussed earlier, at the top of the pyramid that has kind of lays out kind of the statewide policies. And then within the Puget Sound region, they have two things that they use that we're kind of assessing consistency with, with, with the, the city's plan. And that's their Vision 2050 Plan, which is, you can think of that as sort of the regional land use plan. So it's kind of sets kind of the, the land use and economic development strategy for the four county region of Snohomish, King, Pierce and Kitsap counties. And then a companion document to that is the Regional Transportation Plan, which is essentially the transportation element to that regional land use plan. And so there's things within that plan that we need to be consistent with. And it's really like a lot of the things that, that they look for is to make sure that as we're forecasting, you know, out to our planning horizon year that we're accounting for regional growth, you know, trends and influencers that are outside the city, that those like were considering the, you know, not just the growth within the city, but the growth in and around the city that are impacting the road system. And so those assumptions are built in to our, you know, travel demand model forecasting tool. And we'll also highlight in different parts of the plant, all, everything from goals and policies down to the project list, identifying projects from other agencies that aren't necessarily going to be funded or implemented by the city, but could influence traffic within the city. And then I just have a couple of quick slides here on for Growth Management Act. You know, they're, they're basically at a state just kind of dictate that you need to have this consistency and coordination. Not only, you know, you think of your, your transportation plan as sort of highlighting your own strategy for addressing growth impacts, but also communicating your plan out to outside agencies. And so that's, we do that both in developing the plan, but then coordinating with these other partner agencies as we're developing the plan. And then Puget Sound Regional Council through their, just their recent update of this Vision 2050 has a couple of different areas of emphasis that will kind of address in the transportation element, but it'll probably be addressed in other parts of the comprehensive plan as well. Some of those are going to be related to an increased focus on equity, health and safety as well as climate change. And so one of the things that we'll do in the plan is help identify the nexus of out the improvement projects that we identify and as well as the goals and policies in the plan and how that relate to some of these regional areas of emphasis. And as I mentioned before, yeah, this is just a statement that the Regional Transportation Plan has a list of all the regional important projects. And so the biggest connection here is just making sure we're accounting for those projects that kind of are have some, you know, relative importance to the city of Duval that we're accounting for those in our forecasting. So the, what we wanted to highlight here is that you know, this, this update of the transportation plan will not necessarily be business as usual, just because as we've all experienced, the, the business as, as usual has changed. And it really has impacted transportation quite a bit. So, I mean, I list like some of the, the things that will, you know, address in the, the transportation plan, especially within the, the planning horizon year of all these things that are likely continuing to change. You know, things related to equity, health and safety, climate change. Autonomous vehicles will likely start to be deployed within the planning horizon. And what considerations do we need in our plan to be ready for that? The whole kind of virtual way of doing business, telework, telehealth, e-learning, e-commerce, all of these things that we've seen really take hold during the pandemic. We only see those trends continuing and maybe even, you know, creating more share of how people do business. And how do we address that in our plan? And then the last one there is kind of parking and, and what we call curbside management. And really what we wanted to get across there is with the the, the growth in e-commerce, you know, this is more related to how you know, Amazon trucks and, you know, FedEx and UPS and all these different delivery services need curb space, especially in kind of more dense areas where there's not a lot of curb space. And so it's not, it's like, how do we account for that, you know, moving forward? If these things are only going to continue and there's a demand for curb space, not just through those things, but for shared transportation, Uber and Lyft and those kinds of services too. How do we consider the impacts of those service, services on our curb, curb side spaces and kind of address the impacts of those types of services moving forward? So we just wanted to highlight some of the tools that are out there and these are just a couple snapshots of things that are kind of readily available now. So, you know, because we all carry around cell phones with us, there are a whole host of data vendors out there now that collect and synthesize this data for, for use in transportation planning and, and traffic engineering. And so some of these tools we'll be using to help illustrate what's happening on the city's transportation system. So this is on the screen here is an illustration of a kind of a corridor speed and time diagram of a corridor. And so I know Brent, Brent will probably be able to discuss this a little better, but the, the red indicates kind of where there's congestion, slower speeds. And the, the blues and purples are, are higher speeds. So we use this information to help calibrate the model. So we, what we want, not only, we want to kind of show how, you know, within the existing conditions, how these facilities are performing, but we also want to use it to kind of ensure that the model is replicating the way the transportation system is currently operating so that we have some we can be reasonably confident that it's also going to forecast future conditions using kind of similar assumptions. So Brent, I don't know if there's any more you'd want to say about this?
Other, the main thing is, you know, we have these, this, this big data that's being collected all day long. So we can actually look at this type of data and go, you know, oh, there's, there's something going on in the AM peak, you know, at a certain location. That's kind of driving some congestion or, you know, is it the PM peak or or even midday, we can start seeing things more in a, in a bigger perspective. In, in the past, we would only focus on maybe the PMP commute period or, because that's typically when it was, but with all these changes with the pandemic, that, that old paradigm may be shifting to that there's other times of the day that are that have congestion and, and peaks that we should be aware of. So we can, we can use these type of data to, to look at that, try to find it rather than having to collect, you know, go out there with somebody watching traffic all day long.
Yeah. I mean, and I, I think that's been the biggest revolution here is, you know, there's obviously anyone, you know, that works with this data, there's always concerns for, you know, that there is this sort of big brother collection of this data to, to track movements. But from a planner's perspective, like being able to look at the data and you know, we're able to kind of look at seasonal variations and travel spit, how specific episodes like construction impacts or other kind of unique events are affecting traffic. We can kind of see through the pandemic, how travel has changed using this data. And so it's really been like an amazing amount, a kind of toolkit that we've used to help understand how our transportation system works. And what the different pressure points are, not just, you know, you know, as Brent was mentioning, the PMP during the weekday has been the primary focus and, you know, previous transportation plans, partly because it was expensive to collect the data. And so we needed to focus on kind of the biggest constraint. And that was always kind of the commute weekday P and peak. But now we can look at the data in a wider context to see what weekends look like, what different times of the year look like. Even what going back years, how, how does current conditions relate to six months, 12 months? You know, two or three years ago. So very powerful planning tool that will help communicate different things as we're updating the transportation plan. And then, you know, we talked a little bit about the transportation model. Brent, maybe this is a good one for you to, to lead, but yeah, it's, we'll, we'll talk, we'll get in more depth about how the model works, but we want to just to kind of bring this to your attention so that you're aware of kind of some of the tools we'll be using.
Yeah. I mean, we, we, we won't get into the details of the travel demand model right now. Just know that, you know, we, we do create these tools to help with the forecasting of the model. So the purpose of the model is to forecast, you know, to look in the future and do the what-if analysis. So you know, but first we have to calibrate that to existing conditions to say, okay, this model is a valid representation of current conditions. And then we start layering on, okay, here's where we think the growth is going to happen. And then what will that do to the transportation system? This type of model pivots off of land use data. So again, we're, we're, we need to know the land use forecast, the growth areas, you know, we have different, basically we cut up the city into different neighborhoods and say, okay, how many households are here currently? How many do we, are they going to grow? You know, certain neighborhoods, nothing, there's, they're built out. So there's going to be no growth. Other neighborhoods that they're going to be, you know, expanded upon in some way, you know, maybe, maybe it hasn't been developed yet, or maybe the, the land use mix will change. So again, it's like, once we plug in that new land use, then we say, okay, that generates certain amount of trips. And in the, in the post pandemic world, that might, those type of trip rates may change. And then, and then we see what that, what happens to the transportation system.
I think we have a question, Mayor Okerlander?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Portman. One of the questions I have for you is how you factor in, if you are factoring in growth rates in Snohomish County going through 203, since that's a overwhelming majority of the traffic that goes through our city. And part of the reason I ask that is with the opening of Third Avenue, I think we're going to see a lot more pass through traffic on some of those arterials from those jurisdictions that are trying to avoid people coming from other jurisdictions, trying to avoid Main Street traffic.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, I mean, and as part of our model, we have to make assumptions about the, the through traffic, just like you were saying, the, the pass through, people that are not stopping within your city. And we have to make assumptions and forecasts about that. So we get existing data. So we know and in fact, we get the, the, that big data that we were talking about, we, we can understand the origin and destination of trips and, and actually understand, you know, what level of, what amount of traffic on 203 Main Street is, is just going through the corridors is and not stopping. And then we have to develop forecasts for the future and for that, for that same thing, for that path through. And we do look at growth in Snohomish County, growth in King County to understand that. We, we usually look at the PSRC model and go, okay, what's the PSRC model assuming for growth along this corridor? Do we agree with it? Does it make sense? You know, and we go back and forth with, with city staff to, to, to check those things. And we've, in the past, for this, for this model, we've had, we've even done some, you know, sensitivity testing, say, okay, well, we think it's going to be this, but what if it's 20% higher? Well, what if it's 25% lower? Does it change the, the projects? Does it change the conclusions? Patrick, do you want to say?
That's what I was going to say. I mean, we, I mean, in terms of kind of understanding the, the growth in Snohomish County and, and how those, that traffic impacts the city. We, you know, that's where we coordinate with the Puget Sound Regional Council and create their forecasting into our model. So that we're, we're consistent with the growth that they're planning, but we do, we don't take it blindly and just kind of plug it in. We, we want to make sure it makes sense. And I think the one thing I would say about the model, it is not a crystal ball. So it's not to be, to give you a singular answer. We use it to kind of understand kind of how different aspects of growth may impact different areas of the city and how that might impact the, the, the transportation list of projects. Like Brent was saying, if growth is 20% higher, what does that mean for us? So that we're never caught flat footed, that we have kind of a plan, even if some of these things don't make it into the transportation list because it was, you know, kind of a what-if scenario that's not, you know, it's not part of the adopted plan within the Puget Sound Regional Council's forecast of Snohomish County. This modeling tool allows us to kind of test some of these scenarios about regional growth and how that might impact the city. So yeah, the, the tool, it's a and we'll, we'll get more into this as we're developing the plan because I think it's important, I think to understand like, what are the right questions to ask of the model? Because it is beyond just creating this long range list of projects, it can be, it can Because it is beyond just creating this long range list of projects, it can be can be used to answer other types of questions. And so will part of this process help identify and educate, like, what are the right questions to ask of the model? What, you know, how should the city be using the model? To kind of understand these different things, both kind of regional growth as well as kind of growth within the city in different areas, and how can we test those scenarios?
Commissioner Bradley, I saw you had your hand up briefly. Are you good or did you have a question?
Nope, I'm mute.
Sorry, yeah, sorry. My question related to what Mayor Amy said is since that's a state highway, and I know this is a city plan, and it builds up into the Pacific Northwest or the Pewter Sound, sorry, and then into the GMA. Does that information then influence, you know, this this because the state has to pay for that as a thoroughfare, right? Anything that we would recommend?
Well, yeah, they're they're the owners of that state route. And so, yeah, it's, I guess, a little bit of a complicated answer. They or they typically don't have money to do all many improvements. And so that's something that the plan will help address, though, as we identify needs along SR two or three. That's kind of where, you know, with the financing strategy of either looking for grant funding to fund those types of improvements, looking to the state and kind of how we can partner. But it depends, I guess, on kind of what types of things we find, but I, you know, just like the cases with almost every agent, you know, city that has a estate facility, it's the same thing. It's like they'll there's impacts that aren't necessarily the city's growth that are creating needs along the the state route. But yet, you know, the impacts are felt within the city. And so how do we kind of develop a strategy for partnering with the state pursuing grant funding to help implement the improvements that are needed? So but ideally, yes, it would be the state's responsibility to fund those types of projects is just that, in reality, that that's not how it always works.
Great. Councilmember Napland, you had a question?
Yeah, I I see we're running a little late, so I want to, I'm hoping I can ask my questions and then maybe you could send response later, so we don't use up your rest of your presentation time. So I have a couple of questions about the travel demand model, and it came up, you know, when we had a conversation, I think, three or four years ago, and it's that my understanding was that the model didn't really take into consideration queuing and impeding traffic. And you know, so there were the model would show a certain wait time or or a level of service that didn't really seem to match with what the real experience was. And it seemed like we have a lot of really short left hand turn lanes, people can't get out of the way. And then you impede traffic. We have a lot of it as we're on Big Rock, as you're trying to get on to Main Street to take that left, there's a very short amount of space between you know, Starbucks and all of that, there's a lot going on. And then Main Street trying to take that left on to Woodville Duvall Bridge. I mean, I could go, there's a whole bunch of different places, and it just didn't seem like the model took that into consideration, I think, when I asked about it. The last time it was confirmed that the model just didn't have that level of sophistication. So I would like to hear if we can have that addressed, or if I was mistaken. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is as we're looking at land use and forecasts, for example, there is a piece of property on Big Rock that will likely have a school. And they own the property, they have plans to build something. So will that be included as a future item? Because I I can assure you, parents will be dropping kids off and putting a lot of extra pressure on the left hand turn lane, because they'll now route that way. Potentially, you know, anyway, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Are we considering all possible land use, not just housing units? And then the other question I had is when we look at level of service and we choose either the AM or PM, what it seems like we did is you know, if in general the PM was worse, we would always look at PM, but certain intersections you would lose because they're the worst in the AM. Or so in each area, are you choosing the worst? Or is the entire model all have to be either looking at the AM or the PM? Because certainly, like, for example, when you're a school, if you're just looking at 5:00 PM or 8:00 AM, you're going to miss a complete disaster that happens at 3:00 PM, you know? And anyway, and then also, when are you doing your counts? Because, for example, I, when there was a traffic study for the school, it 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 ended up being that it was done after the seniors had already left, they finished the school year, and they're the, you know, the primary kids that have cars at the high school. And so there really wasn't you know, you didn't have that component that really was driving a lot of the traffic that was experienced most of the year. So anyway, those are my questions, trying to see. Yeah, I'd like to see more about the choices of how to determine level of service. I know Sogana tried kind of a roadway capacity or volume, and there was some mixed results. I would like to explore more about, could you do a hybrid? Certain areas might be more it might make more sense to do one versus the other, and we have to choose one method for the whole thing, things like that. Yeah, sorry, I was trying to go quick, but I don't want to take any more time with you having to answer all those questions, but I would like some follow up if possible.
Yeah, we we can certainly follow up and then email and then maybe a discussion afterwards as well.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
I mean, and and I did, I do wanted to say, though, the model is going to be updated as part of this process. So, you know, it it sounds like you have a little bit of a wish list. I think some of those things could be addressed. So that's that's the nice thing about this comp plan update, you know, this this, you know, periodic update. Now is the time to like, try to incorporate some updates to the model that might address those those concerns you have.
That'd be great. Thank you.
All right, we're almost kind of to the end here. So quickly on the financing. Kind of going back to that pyramid of kind of balancing the plan. This is a really important part of the the plan update. So, you know, as part of this, we'll be updating the planning level cost estimates of all the kind of improvement projects that we identify. We'll update all of the funding assumptions on, you know, how the city currently is funding transportation improvement projects, what the sources of funding are. We'll identify, we'll kind of trend those out and identify gaps where current funding sources fall short or kind of paying for this lists of needed improvements. And then what are what are the strategies for closing the gap? And as part of this financing strategy, there's a component called a reassessment strategy, which basically says that as part of this, the six year TIP update, the the cities will reevaluate kind of the the needs for the next six years. And, you know, and and kind of create a balanced funding funding strategy within that six year time period. Because what that's there for is because you know, this is a 20 year plan and you know, that this 20 year kind of time period is a little bit arbitrary. This growth might happen in 15 years, it might take 30 years for this this growth to be realized. And so what, you know, the plan asks for is that we sort of have a process for kind of relooking at it so that we're not kind of left. You know, if things are kind of growing faster than anticipated, the six year TIP is that process for making sure that we're keeping track with our kind of needed improvements. And if it's taking longer, as growth is taking longer, we're also accounting for that. So we'll kind of outline all of that in this updated financing program for the transportation element. And I think that I have this glossary for terms, but I think we kind of covered some of these things. If there was anything that we talked about, if we used an acronym or something that you you didn't understand or need a further explanation, let us know. And, you know, we can kind of clarify any of those misunderstandings. And I think that's it. Hopefully, that was informative. I know that was a lot. But hopefully you have a better understanding of how this process works.
Well, thank you. So I guess, does anyone have any questions or comments? Go ahead.
Commissioner Bradley. If we do have, oh, your emails right here, that's what I was going to ask. Should we just send the emails to you and copy someone in the public works just for follow up questions? Because I know that we're short on time.
I think Director Thomas, do you know how we would send our wish list, I suppose?
You would go ahead and email Steve Linaszewski and copy myself on it, and then forward questions to Patrick and Brent.
Awesome. Thanks.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, one of the things I'm concerned about, and I and I realize this is someone out of your hands and probably more so in the realm of the GMA and PSRC plan. But I'm far from convinced that technology has been taken into account. In part because it's a wild card, nobody really knows what's going to happen. But it doesn't take a lot of foresight to realize that, you know, in five years, autonomous cars are going to be common, 10 years. What over 50% of cars on the road are going to be autonomous, 15 years, they may be required, you may not be able to actually drive your own car. And for good reasons, safety is is one one reason, but the road capacity is really what I'm, you know, what I'm thinking of. When 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 cars are self driving, when they're networked with each other, our road capacity goes up astronomically from the current capacity to, you know, a much, much higher capacity. You get a lot more vehicles on the road and safely do so. That's the type of thing I'm concerned hasn't been taken into account. You guys have any comment on that?
I mean, those are all good questions. You know, the the transportation element will address some of those advances in technology, especially those that are likely to at least start within the the timeframe of the the planning horizon. We I mean, we can, what we'll do in the plan is discuss how we think each of these things will influence travel on the city's roadways. Whether or not that changes the project lists that we ultimately develop. You know, that, especially with autonomous vehicles, I guess, for one is it's just really hard to say when exactly, you know, those are really, you're, we're going to see the fleet transition to autonomous. It's really, you know, we were expecting it to happen sooner, and it's taken longer for that to occur. But we'll discuss a lot of these themes in the plan and what they mean at a high level. So Brent, I don't know if there's anything you would add to that.
I just, just the, you know, in the in the transportation planning, you kind of think of it like a hurricane planning, right? Like you're trying to figure out that cone of possibility. And and one poss, on one side is that, you know, is it going to be completely autonomous and what how will that change the project list? And then there's the the other side of like, you know, maybe the it it just won't happen at all for a long time. So you you kind of have to plan and strategize for that middle ground to figure out what, you know, what's going to happen, especially with autonomous vehicles to get all those benefits. Like you were saying, you can't have real like real drivers on on the road. So you have to have the whole fleet autonomous to get all those those capacity benefits. So it might take longer just to just just because of the nature, human nature. So that's that cone of uncertainty, we don't know. So we have to kind of make those decisions with that uncertainty.
Yeah, I think what we'll what we'll highlight in the plan is a kind of a snapshot in time of our understanding of these emerging trends and what that means for the city. Especially even for these things that are likely to even really be a factor within the next 20 years, let's say, we still want to kind of frame out what we how we think these things will develop and really what that means for travel. Just to position the city to be ready as these things occur, especially if they happen faster than anticipated. That we have kind of a both expectations of what that means in terms of impacts and benefits. And if there's any kind of, even within the goals and policies, anything that we should highlight to help position the city to to be ready for these these changing trends. So it'll be addressed and, you know, that but this is not a technology plan. It's not going to be in great detail, but it will kind of highlight these these different items, kind of our current assessment of them in kind of the current year. And how we think these things are kind of going to unfold. But they're going to have to be, you know, reassessed in time to see how they're really how they're being deployed, how quickly it's happening and you know, and use data that's out there that we can, you mean, from other communities that we can draw trends from and how that might impact the city, you know, so I mean, that that's the best way. So the just the the level that the comp plan and the transportation element fly at, it's kind of at that, you know, 20 to 30,000 foot level. And so that's kind of at the level we'll cover some of those.
And then just the, and then the main point is this is the city's comp plan, this is your comp plan. So look, you know, ask us questions, look to us for some of these answers, but ultimately, how you want to set up your policies is up to the city.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do you or no, or you just find, okay, I have a couple. So do communities usually pick for the levels of service? Do you usually pick one measure? Do you ever see like, similar to what Councilmember Napland was saying? This one issue is a big problem here, maybe it's something else over there. For consistency, do you usually pick one thing for citywide? Or is it kind of a combination of different factors for each spot?
It's typically a can a common methodology throughout the city. So there there's not a mixing and matching of different methodologies. You can, you know, within, I say that, but there there are cities or that have sort of that kind of employ different measures as part of the level of service. So they'll look at corridor travel time, they'll also look at intersection delay. And they'll also include like pedestrian and bicycle facilities into their level service method. So in that way, there, you know, there, it's implemented consistently throughout the city, but there are different kind of different measures you can combine in your level service standard.
And another way of looking at it is, you know, for instance, if you pick intersection level service as your standard or that your method, you can have different standards for different parts of the city, you know, LOS D is for this part of the city, LOS E is for that corridor. So you can use the same methodology, you just have different standards for different facilities.
Kind of that threshold can be different, yeah, based on facility type or some other way of kind of discerning between different types of facilities.
And and you can get really creative with it. Usually you don't, you don't get overly creative because then it gets really complicated. But yeah, you, I mean, you could look at different time of day, you could look at different type of things. This is not to be confused with just when a new development comes in and it's unique. There's, there's a way of dealing with those impacts. And so you don't have to come up with a policy for every little tiny development. It's more of like the general, we, you need to have policies for in that works generally for most facilities. And then you can use individual development review to deal with individual unique cases.
Yeah, and that's kind of with that one slide that we had that had the different puzzle pieces that were kind of fit together, that that is kind of you know, part of that is that these levels of service standards are kind of citywide, kind of performance measures. The SEPA, that Environmental Review, can employ different level level of service measures and thresholds that are just for project level impacts that aren't necessarily tied to concurrency. And so that's another way of getting at those kind of unique project level impacts. Especially as it relates to like access, safety. Those kinds of things that wouldn't be covered with concurrency or kind of a broad set of level service measures.
And good, a good example of that is schools because they typically operate outside the PM peak or normal peak hours. And they just have unique characteristics.
Okay, and then my other question was a little similar. So on your data sources slide, you showed an example of, I think it's INRICS corridor information. I can't remember. Do you use typically one data source across the city? Do you use more than one different types of looking at or information gathering?
It's multiple, yeah, it's multiple different types. The, I mean, we, we were showing an example of INRICS, but there's all sorts of big data sources, different companies, different third-party sources. So we're, we usually will select several to get different angles at the same situation. Patrick, did you want to say anything?
No, I was just saying, there's kind of more and more of these data vendors out there that are producing this, this data. And so we, we work with them all and, you know, we sort of assess the advantages and disadvantages of each and kind of, you know, use, you know, use the ones that we think have the most benefits. You know, they, they're, they typically, there's a cost to them as well. So that, you know, that's the one thing that we're balancing is sort of the, the cost of the data versus kind of the, the benefits that we see out of it. But the, the other ones that are out there, there's a company called Replica that has, they kind of more of a kind of an origin destination sort of data set where they, they kind of know on a corridor, like where the trips that are on that corridor, where, where they're coming and going from. You know, so it's great to identify like when, you know, on SR 203, like where is that traffic? You know, at different times of the day, who's, who's using that roadway? And another company that we've used with the city of Duval is a company called Streetlight. And they have a similar data set that is a similar kind of origin destination type data set. These companies now are, you know, a lot of the data was more vehicle focused. They're now starting to parse out different modes. And so we're getting that kind of same level of detail within different modes, transit, ped bike and truck traffic. So, yeah, I mean, that, that's almost another discussion of where we can highlight kind of what, what are these different methods of data and how, how do they work? I mean, it's all to say that we still will go out and collect physical counts. So that, that is still part of what we do. And so, you know, we sort of incorporate this big data with the actual counts that we're getting, the physical counts.
Great, thank you. And then I guess to end cap this for my list of questions anyways, is, you know, today we've talked about how that's a discussion of our leader time. And then I've also heard talking about maybe like a wish list of things because we don't want to get to that next point and be like, oh, we kind of needed this other data. So Director Thomas, you mentioned we would email Steve Lenishewski and you with any questions, anyone here has today or follow ups, and then you guys will forward that on for the next time.
We'll forward them on to the consultant and then we'll get answers back to the entire Council and Planning Commission. Because this is leading into the scoping of our transportation plan update. And so this is a good meeting. We're getting good questions and we'll get some answers back to you. And we might need to do maybe one more follow-up, you know, joint meeting as we're going into the RFP process.
All right. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Director Thomas, did you have anything else or does that sum it up for you too?
No, I'm super excited. I love comp planning.
Well, Patrick and Brett, thank you so much for joining us tonight. And for all that great info you presented, of course, you're welcome to stay, but you probably have other places to be. So we hope you guys have a good night.
All right. Thank you.
Right. Thanks. Good night.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to our review of the preliminary capital budget for 2023 and 2024 with Director Mason.
Good evening, everyone. Dana Mason, Finance Director. Let me share my screen. And so tonight I'm going to be sharing with you the 2023, 2024 preliminary CIP budget, one-time expenditures and new equipment and machinery. And the agenda is we'll just go over the CIP summary, capital improvement projects, sources and uses by fund, the estimated carryover from, from the 23, 24 budget to the, to the next budget, the 25, 26 budget, one-time service, professional services expenditures in, for the 2023 budget. And then new machinery and equipment expenditures. And we'll just dive right in here. So this is a summary of the 2023, 2024 capital improvement projects. You can see carryover from 21, 2022 is almost $18.6 million. On going, going or reoccurring capital improvement projects, 220,000.
Director Mason, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We had a quick question. Is it about?
Yeah, I can't see it very well. And I just wondered if there's any way this could be emailed super quick because I can't read it very well. Maybe mine are bad. Yes. Sharing, I will quick. Thank you. Email. Thank you so much. I apologize for interrupting. I just. Already. Well, you got it. I will just send it to the whole council.
Thanks. That's perfect. Thank you.
And it will have Director Lenishewski's notes and theirs too. Okay, shall I continue on?
Yeah, I think that's okay. Yeah, please do.
Okay. All right. Everyone can see, okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so we're back to the summary. Let me get my little highlighter again. And okay, I'm going to go back one, just to reiterate that this is the, the whole 23, 24 budget, capital improvement project budget is about $24.8 million. And the new capital improvement projects is almost 6 million. And for the facilities, there's quite a bit of carryover. The only new project is city, city hall flooring. And you can see the funding here for these projects, RE1, RE2, some grants. That's the Department of Commerce grant for the wastewater treatment plan and office remodel. And then some ARPA expenditures that were already approved by, approved by council. And please stop me if you have another question. I'll just stay there on the slide. For street CIP, so we have a big carryover, the Third Avenue Northeast roadway and sidewalk project at the tail end of the 142nd, the first phase. And then we have the new phase to design for the, well, design will be done in 23, 24, and then the construction will be, be done partially in the following biennium. And then we have some new overlay projects. And the overlay for the TBD is for small, or the to be determined over the lay is for small repair work that's currently not designated. Like the Taylor Park street paving the city recently added. For parks CIP, there's some carryover here in some, the ongoing or just reoccurring projects that happen every year. Big changes here is, or big new projects here is the Big Rock Phase 2, which is, if this is just the design portion and the cost for the entire project are either 6.3 or 8.3 million, depending on what, what options are chosen. And the reason why the whole project isn't in here yet is because we, we don't have all of the funding sorted out. And then there's a project for the, the new park signage, Cherry Valley Court resurfacing, Box Hall Court resurfacing, and then some carryover down here. And the court resurfacing estimates are still in development and may be adjusted. For sewer CIP, we have a bunch of carryover infiltration and inflow repair, the sewer train upgrades and UV projects, blower replacement. This is a project that happens every year. The mobile pump unit is a carryover project that wasn't started in 21, 2022. And then some new projects, headworks and inflow improvements, electrical improvements, and then upgrades to pump station number one. So far, so good. For the water CIP, some more carryover projects, just one new project that F3, F4 reservoir recoding inlet and outlet. And that's a big rock tank and pump house work. So we code the inside and outside. And, and mixing improvements is, mixing improvements is the tank in the tank as well as adding a pump for capacity needs. For surface water CIP, these two top two projects are just ongoing projects. The retrofits pertain to existing ponds, the city tries to upgrade and seek out grant revenue for those to help with that cost. The, the small neighborhood projects are just site specific and they just, the needs come up as they arrive. And then the Miller Street conveyance improvements had ditches which are mostly filled in with pipe. And the city has issues with that. So Director Lenishewski said, I wrote down that he was going to work with Seattle University program to design improvements at a reduced rate. So estimated carryover from 23, 24 to 20, or to 25, 26 is about $6 million. It will be part of the Third Avenue project. So that's intended to extend into the next biennium. The construction portion of the Phase 2, 142nd sidewalk, the three new sewer CIP projects, and then the, the new water CIP reservoir repo. So just as a recap, the CIP budget is approximately 24.8 million. Of that, 18.6 million is carryover from 21, 2022. And then we estimate that 6.7 million of this budget will be carried over into the next biennium. And does anyone have any questions about this portion of the presentation? Excellent.
Remember.
Yeah, I have a question about the source of funds for several of the projects on water sewer storm. And when we receive GFC money, part of that is to buy into the system. And so it can be used to improve, you know, existing capacity and not just for new capacity projects. And so I'm noticing, you know, we're obviously using a lot of ratepayer funds, which are existing customer funds to do this when technically we could use GFC money because they're paying in, buying into the system that we've already paid for. So they could be paying for some of these projects and not just paying for new growth projects. Because just as an example, we transferred, what, $3 million of ratepayer money to pay for the sewer expansion project? So anyway, it's just an idea that I've been discussing for quite some time. And I, I'm hopeful that we can hold the rates down a little bit and have the GFC money finally come to fruition and, you know, ratepayers have been paying for this system for an awful long time, waiting for the capacity to come in. And now it's coming in or waiting for the new, new customers to come. So I just, I think this is the time to manage and not pass on the cost to the ratepayers.
The portion of the operating funds that's transferred to the CIP funds for the, for the larger projects, that's the recommended amount from FCS group.
I understand that, but there are, as a policy, it could be a choice of this council to decide to use GFC funds. And when I discussed it with them before, they were like, yes, the GFC funds are eligible to do that if that's how you, you know, want to do it. And so for me, I would rather not increase rates to the ratepayer and use GFC money legally to buy into the system, which is what the intention was. And reimburse those ratepayers who built the system and been paying for the system for decades.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Follow-up question to what Jennifer just suggested. And would that allow us to raise our GFC rates accordingly? So again, growth pays for growth as opposed to existing residents pay for growth. And Dan, I don't know if that's a question for you or, or who, but it's certainly a question that occurs to me.
Right now, our GFCs are increased by, I believe it's the two-year average of the ENR. I can't remember if it's CPI or the ENR. I'd have to go back and look at the revenues. And that was adopted by resolution, but Mayor, I see that you have your hand up. So maybe you have some input into this.
Oh, I'm here. Melander, go ahead.
As, as a general rule, when you, growth pays for its portion of new growth, many of these projects are not just a result of new growth. They're, they're ongoing routine maintenance of the system. So anytime you take money, we have a full financial plan for the sewer system. So every time you take money from somewhere else, you need to replace it from somewhere else for the future planning, or else in the future, our rates will go up significantly instead of stably like they have for the last 20 years. So I think that this is a great opportunity for Steve to bring FCS group back during the further budget discussions to discuss this further with the committee at the whole.
All right. Yeah, this sounds like a good topic to have on the radar, which I've written it down. And then we can have a really in-depth discussion with council about what they want to do with that. All right. Any other questions on what Director Mason's presented so far? All right, go ahead, Director. I think you had more, right?
Yep, I sure do. This one time, I just wanted to give everyone a heads up about one-time expenditures and then new equipment expenditures. So not ones that are already being funded by the equipment replacement fund. On, there's a one-time professional expenditures. So the 140, the total for this is, these two numbers added together, which I probably should have done. So about, is that 1,041? Right, right in that area. And about 145,000 of that is carryover from the 2021, 2022 budget projects that we just couldn't get to. The emergency plan update is still being budgeted at the same amount. The transportation compound element, which you're very familiar with because we spoke about it tonight, that's going to be about 250,000 on the city share. A workload analysis was budgeted at $10,000 in this biennium, and we've upped that to about $25,000. There's money for a lobbyist for 2023 and 2024. So $100,000 there. We budgeted a little low for the long-range municipal plan in 2021, 2022. So the 20, the, the upcoming biennial budget has $60,000 budgeted for that. The housing action plan was budgeted for $75,000 in 21, 2022. And that is actually going, just going to be finished. So it's a carryover project into 2023. And that is funded with grant funding. The comp plan update was budgeted just as scoping in 2021, 2022. And so that cost will be $225,000 in the next biennium and weeks. The city expects to get $125,000 grant to help cover those costs. And then we have the parks, trails and open spaces update. And that, that cost is new for this biennium, about $150,000. And then the Main Street in Virginia feasibility study, that will be $150,000. Are there any questions about these one-time expenditures?
I don't see any.
All right, moving on. So here's one-time expenditures or it's really new machinery and equipment purchases. A slope mower, and this will replace, replace the goats most likely. Um a slope mower, um and this will replace, replace the goats most likely. So that will be divided between the street fund and the storm fund for forty thousand dollars. And then after it's purchased, the city will start putting um money into the equipment replacement fund to, to um start saving for a replacement eventually. Uh a new truck for the Park Street that will be used by Park Street Water and Storm uh for twenty-six thousand dollars. A scissor lift, a scissor lift for thirty thousand dollars and thirty thousand five hundred dollars. And this is needed to repla- uh rebuild banner poles to help um with the Christmas tree event, tank cleaning, tree trim, trimming. And uh the hope is this will save the city in rent revenues over time. A paint striker is needed to paint streets, parking stalls, uh sports courts. And then this is a carryover from uh twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Uh pipe, a water pipe rack cover. And it's just to organize and stack, stack water pipe, um and then to cover it. Uh valve operator Turner, which is, it's a machine needed to expedite valve excising. I'm not really sure what that is. And then two refrigerated composite samplers, and those are needed for the wastewater treatment plant. So four of these will, will start uh uh giving money to the equipment replacement fund once they're purchased for future replacements. Are there any questions about this one?
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Ju- ju- just a quick, quick question. I think I know the answer. Uh some, some of these we've approved ARPA funds for use already, have we not? Like this, I thought that was one thing we approved with the ARPA.
Yeah, I don't believe any of these are approved for ARPA funds, but I will double check and, and let you know.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And actually have a slide for the Q two, um the Q two uh report. And it does have ARPA expenditures that have been approved uh so far, so we can check it out. All right, and that is it for this section. So thank you.
Thank you. Any last questions or is that it? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Nappel.
Yeah, I'm just wondering on the items that will eventually require replacement and annual replacement um contribution. Will that be included in the biennium? Because otherwise, we won't really get an ongoing cost of what that would look like as part of the budget. It didn't start until the next biennium or if it was only just part of the biennium. Because you know what I mean? Trying to distinguish between one time and then recurring expenses and, and how does that look in a budget? So if we buy something one time but really don't have the capacity to pay for it on an ongoing basis, you know, we want to feel see that.
Um, so it wouldn't, it would not be reflected in the twenty, well, it could be reflected. So depending on when we purchase it, the, the payments for that equipment would start the next year. So the payments to uh replace it would start the next year.
So some might show up in two thousand twenty-four, but many might not show up at all.
Yeah, the, the rest would start showing up in the following bienniums. So I can come up with a cost that shows what the annual cost of replacing the um equipment that's going to go into the equipment replacement fund. Um I can, I can come up with a cost for that and just, um, I mean, that's actually a good idea. It's just what the annual cost, future cost will be.
Cause I'm seeing things labeled one time. In the back of my mind, I'm thinking there's going to be an effort to use fund balance or one-time money to pay for it, possibly. I don't know exactly how the budgeting is going to occur, but often we'll use one-time money to buy, to pay for one-time expenses. And so to understand what the recurring cost of adding those pieces of equipment, that would be helpful.
Well, the, the equipment, um, the equipment, the um the plan was not to use one-time monies to, for those equipment replacements.
What about for the one-time purchase?
Uh for the one-time services?
No, the one-time purchase. You said for the recurring. Oh, you said the one-time amount for things that will have a recurring charge you weren't planning on using one-time amounts for.
Right, so that's confusing. So for example, the scissor lift, that would come out of, I think it was uh two different funds. And so those funds will pay with other fund balance or charges for services revenue or revenue for that purchase.
For the first purchase. Okay, sounds good. Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, so I think we can go ahead and slide right into the second quarter financial report.
I'll just start with this first slide. So um this is the end of June, seventy-five percent of the budget is complete and the city had received sixty-two percent of budgeted revenue. So it may, may seem low at this point in time, but the general fund you can see up here is on track. And um and we'll talk later, there's a good explanation for the revenue that's lower in the other fund groups. And then you can also see seventy-five percent of the bienniums comple- complete. And then we've got a low amount spent for expenditures. And um we'll, we'll also take a deeper dive to that on the, you know, on the next few slides. So can you see the whole slide? Is the top just gone? Uh, the bottom that's showing.
The bottom?
Just the bottom stuff is showing. Okay, let me see if I undo this or refresh. Maybe it will. There we go. All right, I think I might have put some of those fade-ins and it wasn't working quite right, but here we go. Okay, so um for the general fund, approximately seventy-nine percent of the revenue uh had, budgeted revenues been received. And that's almost eight percent more than the prior year. And you can see up here in property tax, we're right on track. Uh utility revenues are a little higher than normal just because we received some, some revenues in December that were normally received in January. Um, oh, revenues normally received in December were received in January. Uh sales tax is a little high, but that's because more than budgeted because we um, we did not, we were just, we budgeted the same amount of sales tax in twenty twenty-one as we did in twenty twenty-two. So thus, we're not sure what was going to happen with our sales tax revenue. Um but that's, uh right now, it's about six percent more than in twenty twenty-one. And in sales tax from construction, right here, you can see that we met the maximum. And so um as of May, all sales tax from construction is now being received into the strategic fund for one-time use. And then I just wanted to point out that charges of service revenue um is a little bit high. And that's uh for engineering fees. We've already met the budget for that line item. And then tree mitigation fees, the city had received about eighty-nine thousand um before in, up to quarter two, and that amount of money was not budgeted. So and then miscellaneous revenues looks a little high too, and that's because um we received a, a retro program refund from AWC in uh at the end of twenty twenty-one. Okay, so general fund expenditures, um we've rece, you know, used just sixty-five of the amount that budget, that's budgeted. And um that's just five percent more than twenty twenty-one. And a big reason for that is, I didn't know if you draw, the big reason for that is um is salaries and benefits. And, and that's primarily, primarily in our police department. We had some, some payouts in twenty twenty-one, and I think there'll be one more that we'll see um when we compare quarter two, uh twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, quarter two. And then we've also had vacancies in our police department. So that's the main reason for the short, the, the lower salaries. Okay, and um the building and permitting revenue, it's just at twenty-nine percent. But more building revenue is expected in the twenty, the second half of twenty twenty-two. And it's already starting to show in or trickle in. So um I, I think this uh it's gonna be a little bit stronger in the third quarter report. Uh and billing and permitting expenditures, again, a lot lower than budgeted. Um you know, it should be around seventy-five percent right now, if everything was trending out evenly. But that's mainly because of our impact fee distribution is a lot lower than it was in twenty twenty-one. And that too should be trickling in um towards the end of the year. And then in the water and sewer uh and storm drainage uh funds, all the revenues are coming in just as extended, uh as expected. Water expenditures are a little low. Um we had a twenty twenty-one invoice that's, that will be paid in twenty twenty-two. So that should go up a little bit. And then also, you know, water usage is, is higher in the summer. So we'll see that the increase happen in the fall when we receive those bills. Um, and then uh the sewer expenditures are a little low because we haven't done the full transfer from the sewer operating fund to the sewer CIP fund. And then storm expenditures are a little low just because we have a new position that was budgeted in that fund and then it is um still unfund or unfilled. And then this is just our water uh GFCs. So you can just see because of the lack of, or building revenue coming in later in twenty twenty-two. Um those numbers should go up for quarter three and of course quarter four. And so we're just at thirty-seven percent for water GFCs, twenty-eight percent for sewer and twenty-five uh point nine for storm drainage GFCs. And then here's our, our real estate tab. We received, or we received revenue from a hundred and fourteen um uh units sold in twenty twenty-one compared to a hundred and thirty-seven. But our revenue is still a little bit higher, and this has been adjusted from your report. I, the, the wrong numbers were in your report, so it's been adjusted down a little bit. And you can just see it's because of the average sale, sales price from unit, per unit. So in twenty twenty-one, it was seven hundred thousand. In twenty twenty-two, it was eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. And that, this is the average rate that this city has been receiving per unit sold. And then there's not a lot to say about impact fees. Um the revenue received in park, impact fees, the larger number is the money that the city receives from a developer. It goes into escrow. And then once the development has been, um the park improvements have been made by the developer, that money will um be paid out to the developer and the city will have a, a, a capital asset basically. Another part. And then a transportation benefit district, so uh it is ten percent or seventeen thousand more than the city received in the prior year. So that's just chugging along quite nicely. And then our sales tax revenue. So this, um this chart right here includes sales tax from construction. So without sales tax from construction, uh it, regular sales tax increased by six point one percent or thirty-three um thousand eight hundred dollars. And then here's the slide that we were talking about. Um this is the American Rescue Plan Act. So our total award was two point two million. Approved expenditures so far, three hundred and thirty-four thousand. And um we've got just over one point nine uh remaining award. And so, which, I can't remember what expenditures we were looking for.
Scissor lift, yeah.
The which one?
Scissor lift, I think.
I don't see it.
I do think we discussed it, but I don't know that it ever actually got approved. But I do think it was brought up at one point.
Okay, so maybe we need to revisit that and see if that's something council wants to spend our, like expenditures on for ARPA money. And our second tranche of money came in in July, so we'll see that on, in the, in the third quarter report. And then here's just a summary of where we're at. So we started, or we, or uh out the biennium at twenty-six, just over twenty-six million dollars. And right now, we're at just over thirty-five point two million dollars. So that's a uh a net change of one point or nine point one million dollars, just over nine point one million dollars. And that is it for the quarter two report. And we hope now that, you know, the finance team is fully staffed, that these reports will come um out faster. So I apologize for the delay in getting into, I mean, it's almost like it's old news, but still, I'm sure extremely interesting to everybody.
Thanks, Director Mason. Does anyone have any questions? All right, well, thanks again for presenting that. Um lastly, on this agenda, just the council planning calendar um is always on there. So on the digital version of the agenda, you can always click on that and it takes you to that PDF. Um I think the only things I would just point out, you know, there's various things on the upcoming meetings, but just keeping budget in mind, at the October fourth cow, um there's the overview, the operating budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um let's see. And then on the October eighteenth and twenty-fifth meetings, you'll start to see those department budget presentations. Um and then all sorts of other fun stuff on the, and what are we calling that? The queue or just the ongoing? Not a black pit, but uh yeah, anyways, just, there's always lots that we can work on. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn at six forty-six. We'll be back at seven for the council meeting. Thanks, everyone.
All the Tuesday, September twentieth, two thousand two, Duval City Council Meeting to Order at seven PM. Uh would you please join me with, for the flag salute and you all may stand. I pledge allegiance to individuals with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Okay. Councilmember Shaffer?
Here.
Councilmember Mercer? Mayor Pro Tim McHenry?
Here.
Councilmember Isaacson?
Here.
Councilmember Nappel?
Here.
Councilmember Lovett?
Here.
Mayor Okerlander?
Here. We have a quorum. And with that, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Thee none may have a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second chief.
It's been moved in second to approve this evening's council agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Passes. And with that, we uh have a little bit different order to this evening's agenda. So first up, we have special presentations and an introduction to our new police administrative specialist. So I will turn this over to Chief DeBach.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city staff and members of meeting who are present. Uh Chief DeBach will be with Police Department. Uh back in April, uh we started our search for administrative assistant down to Police Department. And it was, it's been a long process, but we're glad that it's over. And uh we got Courtney Lewis uh was selected and she's now on board down at the Police Department. She is amazing. She has uh picked up things very quickly. She's ahead of schedule in her training down there. And she's brought a positive light to our Police Department. She's very energetic and has a really good attitude. Uh we're happy to have her. So without, introduce Courtney Lewis.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name's Courtney Lewis. Um a little bit about me. So I am from a town called Boring, Oregon. Very, yeah. A very tiny town, about three thousand people when I lived there. It's probably about, you know, your guys' population now, about eight thousand. Um and when I was nineteen, I decided the boring life wasn't for me anymore. So I decided to move down to Orlando, Florida to be a princess at Disney World. So that's what I wanted my whole life and I did that for about seven years. And in between, I went seasonal with Disney and decided to be a flight attendant. So I flew around the world. It was amazing. And then COVID happened. So Disney World closed and all flights were grounded. So I didn't know what I wanted to do. I had no idea where I was going. But then a job in law enforcement popped up as being a nine-one call taker. So I thought, you know, might as well give it a go. It's different than anything I've ever done, but it's something that I can actually help people. And my previous jobs have been great, but they're not, you know, like life-saving things or anything with law enforcement. So I just thought it would be a great opportunity. Um so I did that for about a year and then my, my husband got a job going. So we moved up here in January and we just got married in January. So we moved up here in January and we just got married in January. So it's been such a whirlwind of a year, but I am so incredibly happy to be here. And I was telling the chief and the lieutenant too, it's been kind of a full circle for me. Because coming from such a small town, moving to Orlando, Florida, having the big city life and then moving back to a very small town and loving it. I mean, it's so charming. Everyone's so nice. It's so refreshing coming from a place like Orlando, Florida, which is great. But no one knows anybody and it's not close knit. It's not, you know, everyone's nice here and everyone's kind. So I really do enjoy the city and I can't wait to get to know it even more and get to know all of you. So thank you for having me today.
I was gonna say, thank you so much. It's definitely a pleasure to have you here and can't wait to meet you officially in person soon. I can, I can see by the smiles on Chief Dubac and Lieutenant Sabrein's faces that you've definitely been a positive force in the short time. So welcome. Happy half.
Much. Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate it. Anybody have any questions?
Can I ask a quick question, Mayor?
Yes, please do.
Am I allowed to ask what princess?
Absolutely. I don't want to hear anymore. All right. So moving on to comments from the audience. First off, Clerk Melon, did we have any written comments submitted?
No, we're, we did not.
All right. And do we have anyone on the line that would like to speak? And if so, please raise your hands and the clerk will call on you. Not seeing any hands raised. So we'll go on to see if there's anyone in the live audience that would like to speak this evening. And if so, please approach the podium and provide your name and you'll have three minutes to speak to whatever topic you wish. All right. Not seeing any. So we'll go ahead and close public comment. Next up, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved in second to approve this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. With that, we'll go ahead and move on to scheduled items. First up is the mayor's report. Just want to remind folks that next Thursday is the Association of Washington City's City Connector up in Everett. It is at a restaurant, a great Thai restaurant in downtown Everett. That will be in coordination actually with Snohomish County City Council. The Snow Valley Governments Association Quarterly Meeting is next Wednesday and that will be online. Forgive me, I have a coyote puppy here. And then Sound Cities Association Quarterly Networking Dinner will feature Brian Sarat. And that is October fifth in Renton. So it's the first one we've had in person in quite a long time. So hope some folks can make it. And so give me a ring and we could likely carpool. Finally, on the SCA front, we have a board meeting tomorrow and on Friday, hopefully the final selection of the new executive director. I don't know who the candidates are, but I've heard that they're fantastic. And so definitely looking forward to seeing who that next leader is going to be. On the city administrator recruitment update, I think for all of those that participated in the panels a couple of weeks ago, you know what a hard decision it is to make to select one of the candidates. And we, I've narrowed it down to one and we'll be providing a conditional offer letter tomorrow. So we'll see how that is received, but I think we're all really pleased with the caliber of candidates and the different, the different levels of experience and backgrounds that they all brought to the table. And I think hopefully we'll have a really positive start moving forward in the next month or so. And last on my list for today is we do need to appoint a Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee rep. With Councilmember Hoag being gone, we had some discussion last week, or I'm sorry, at our last meeting. And so I'd like to see if there's anyone interested in being the member and the alternate this year. I know Councilmember Shaffer had said at the last meeting, he preferred to be virtual and an alternate. So I'm not sure what discussions have happened amongst folks in that time. But we do have an obligation to have a member and an alternate.
So Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Okay, I was just, I had to look up that email really quick. So they meet the second Wednesday of the month at seven PM. Says virtual. Is that the indefinite plan for now? Do you know? Or is there a plan for them to go back in person in Renton?
I'm not sure when they'll plan to go back in person, but I know everyone's trying to get back in person.
Does anyone want to do it?
And also, let's also preface that, Mayor Protim, with if it's virtual now and that's doable for someone. And then if it goes in person, we can switch representatives in the middle of the year. So that's not going to be an issue either.
If nobody can or wants to do it, I can do it. On that happens to be a time I'm free.
Okay.
So seeing anyone else jumping out of a chair.
All right. So unless there's objections or someone else that wants to fill the position role, we'll go ahead and put Mayor Protim McHenry's name forward. And unless Councilmember Shaffer objects, we'll continue to remain the alternate.
I will, I will be alternate. Amy's already made a big choice or a big sacrifice, so I can make a bit of a sacrifice.
Thank you. All right. So moving on, we have the King County Fire District Board five report with Chief Erskine.
Good evening, Mayor, member of council. That's on virtually and those who are present, Chief Dubac and Lieutenant. I did submit a report this, this week. Highlights that we've reached nine hundred and twenty five calls year to date. That's of this morning. That's about three hundred or three and a half calls per day, which should average us to about twelve hundred and seventy eight for the year. Again, that would be a record number, which I think it would be up about sixty eight from last year. We finished at, I think, around twelve, ten. Most of those runs are EMS based, so about sixty seven percent, thirty three percent on the fire side. Our second highest category still continues to be called for service and then returned without any action, which is a good thing. So we're either going to help our neighbor or a good intent call comes in and we get canceled before we're en route. Downtown, the headquarters district is the busiest. In the month of August, we had a hundred and forty two calls. Ninety seven of those were in the downtown area. And of those ninety seven were EMS related. Highlights with the city, we're continuing to collaborate with building and planning, Eastside Fire Rescue to get our inspection program up and running. It's taking a little longer than possible, but we don't want to rush it. So, you know, time is, a little more time is well worth the effort. I received on the twelfth of September notice from WSRB that they'll be planning the twenty twenty three survey of the city and the fire district. I believe, Mayor, they sent you a letter also. So they will be evaluating the water system amongst, you know, a few other things. So I'll reach out and try to schedule that on a day that's convenient for the city folks also. We'll be working with the Riverview School District on some emergency planning within the next month. So I'm excited for that. And those are the highlights of my report. We've all been impacted by this. This is more of a public service involvement impacted by the smoke from the Bolt Creek Fire, which started about ten days ago. My understanding is it's about eighty percent contained. So hopefully that'll, that'll keep the smoke out of the valley and we won't be coughing and having scratched throats and whatnot. So as a first timer, going through my first wildfire season, it was definitely a different experience for me. So and to see the haze. So any questions from my report?
Chief Erskine, I actually have a question for you. And that is, you know, we're going into yet another red flag warning. We've had brush fires both in between, on two oh three, between Carnation and Duval and then a pretty significant brush yesterday. I'm just curious to see if you're having any forethought on what we should be prepared for over the next couple of weeks before we actually get some precipitation and the air cooling a lot more.
I, I think we just want to continue to remind everybody just how quickly even the smallest event can turn into a big one. So as most things we prepare for now, if you see something, say something. You know, don't think, oh, we'll just be able to put something out. Call, let us come and evaluate it. If you're driving and you see something, call, you know, let us come and remedy it. You know, and we have a Burbank in place for a reason. The humidity is low, you know, the wind's kicking up. It's been awfully dry. So take that serious. You may not think it's something big, but it can turn into something big really, really quickly. So I would just ask for everybody to, you know, take care of your neighbor, take care of yourself and just by, by maybe being inconvenienced by not having something on the, you know, that you would normally do in the evening if you were outside or wherever. Just, you know, wait until the times a little bit better and keep everybody safe. So that would be my advice. And we're ready. You know, we train all year long for these events. We have such a highly trained staff, you know, that they have traveled the globe, you know, fighting wildfires. We're blessed to have the personnel that we do. So I, I rest assured you're in good hands, but let's do everything we can to not have to rely on our folks.
Thank you, Chief. Does anyone in council have any questions? And I cannot see hands. So Clerk Melon, if you see hands, if you could please call in folks, that would be great.
Okay. Councilmember Shaffer.
Thank you. Not a question, more of a comment. But thank you, Chief. I, I had incident at my house a few weeks ago where I stupidly started my boat engine with my garage door open. And I have a CO2 alarm in my garage. It went off contacting my security facility that I use. They entered a comment, contacted you and man, you guys were on your way. You didn't call me. And I was able to catch you in time telling you, no, it was my fault and everybody's okay. But boy, you were gonna be there real quick.
We like those tests.
Thank you very much, Chief. Please appreciate you providing reports to us and telling us what's going on in the district. So thank you. Next up, we have the Duval Police Report with Chief Dubac.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city staff, and members of the community who are present. Chief Dubac, Duval Police, I'm here to provide you with the police staff report for August twenty twenty two. I'm gonna start with a recruiting update. So it'll give you guys an idea of where we're at regarding staffing. Also, Boye Hope continues to progress well through his field training progress, our process. He should be done by the end of this month. Fingers crossed. Will be, he'll be a great addition to our team. As you met, Courtney Lewis started this past month as our admin assistant in the front office. We were excited to introduce her, you all this evening. She is definitely an asset to our team down there. We currently still have three openings in our patrol staff and one sergeant position. We have one lateral candidate who's in the later stages of the background process. And we have a second lateral candidate that we just started recently in the background process. They should be assigned investigator here shortly. And then we have a entry level candidate who we just started the process with them as well. So those, we have fingers crossed that all three of those make it through the background process successfully. And then our plan is still, as we discussed previously, is to recruit internally for that sergeant position and eventually promote somebody internally up into that position. Tonight, you saw that there was an ILA in your packet for Redmond Distillery Services. And the next couple of months will be bringing additional ILAs and contracts forward for your review. We will be renegotiating our initial legal public defender contract, a new ILA for mental health services with the city of Redmond. And we'll be having a recommended ordinance change regarding court violations for your consideration. The school year has begun. Also, Donby is our new SR up at Cedar Crest. He's been busy establishing rapport with staff and students up there. He's been very well received. We're happy to have him up there. We've also been spending time at Church Valley Elementary and in the school zones. We are excited for this continued ongoing relationship we have with the district. And hopefully things work out this year. We're gonna be able to keep our staffing levels up there. So there's gonna be minimal impact to them. Our school, excuse me, on October ninth, between twelve and four, we'll be hosting the first Faith and Blue event here in Duval at the Timberlake Church. And all the community is invited to attend this event. And the purpose of the event will be to build bridges and reduce biases by facilitating discussions regarding public safety and how community members, faith leaders, law enforcement can work together to ensure safe neighborhoods while protecting the rights for everybody. So this is the first time we're hosting this event, so I don't know what to expect. I again encourage everyone to come out and check it out. Also Dean, who put on our national night out this past month, is the one who's gonna be also putting this one together as well as the event. So we're excited about starting that here in Duval. On October first, the police department will begin wearing pink badges. I brought them here for you guys to see in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So if you see our offices around town, these are authorized for the month of October. If you want to take a look, I'll send them over here. So we'll be wearing those in October. And I did put the October police stats and minutes from our October twelfth, or August twenty ninth public safety committee meeting in the package for your review. So are there any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Let's see, one question, Chief. Sorry, this, this is right. The, where was the, what'd you call it? Faith and Blue? Yes, thank you. It's gonna be right across the street at Timberlake Church. We have a parking lot behind the church or between the Sticker Office segments. Okay. And was there a notice that went out to that somewhere? I put it on Facebook and you sent it out in the building. Okay, okay. I'll, I'll use that. Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chief, and thanks for, for bringing your new employee to visit us and hope you have a good evening. We'll move on to council committee reports. First up is finance and administration.
Do you want to update on that?
Yeah, sure. I was trying to remember if we had an actual finance committee meeting. Dana, Director Mason, did we have a meeting? I think we did, didn't we? I'm embarrassed. I can't remember. I shouldn't have shared.
We, we did have a meeting. I, I could find the notes if you'd like.
Well, I'll, I'll update on procurement. But you're right. I sent notes and I wrote it. What was that?
You made me belong.
Oh, good. Hey, I had COVID three months ago and I think my brain got fried. I'm gonna use that excuse for a while. It was relevant. Okay, here we go. I found my draft document. Just briefly, a procurement is on there and it's, it's been on my plate. I haven't been working on it. But I finally just looked at it again. And basically what I was doing was trying to integrate the conversations that had happened before Dorothy Lingle left and make sure that those were included in the document. I mean, I think we're, I really didn't do much, but I think we're ready to hand it back to Director Mason to make it look tidy and then do another review. So yeah, I'm excited to get that. I think it's been a kind of a long, slow effort, but sometimes they can take a while. So, okay, I found my notes. We met on, no, this is August. This can't be right. Hang on here. I, I think I sent a couple of notes all at once. Oh, gosh. There we go. Did you find it? Well, why don't we go to the next person and then come back to?
I have it right here if you want, actually.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, so we had a meeting on September eighth. We first looked at kind of a new internal service funds policy. It's, I had asked a question about how we, you know, allocated expenses. And what we use is we use these internal transfers to transfer the charges to different departments and funds. And so after I asked that question, Director Mason put together this amazing document to just show how they allocate expenses. And so I'm not sure if that's just an internal document or if it will be brought to council to look at and be approved. Something maybe Director Mason could answer. We also Something maybe Director Mason could answer. We also looked at the August sales tax report, which was interesting. Um, again, we're seeing definitely a flattening of retail sales. So, you know, you could look at that and wonder, is that because we had kind of poor weather? Because August would have been reflective of two months prior. Was it, we had bad June, you know, maybe there weren't as many people spending money. Um, hard to say. Something to look at, keep watching. Um, the bright spot was food services was, uh, twelve point five percent over the year before. So that's exciting. That hopefully means our local restaurants are, you know, picking back up. Um, so then we looked at the two thousand twenty-one unaudited financial statements and notes. So, um, this is something that's recommended by, I think it's a state auditor, to have, the finance committee or the council review those. And so, uh, Director Mason gave us a really great overview. We asked some questions. And the, the rest of the notes, um, hopefully, so I don't have to go into too much detail, those will get then up to the rest of council.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Napland? Seeing none, we'll move on to land use. Did land use meet?
No, land use didn't meet, and we are missing one person from there, but we're an inactive committee right now.
Okay, moving on to public safety, Councilmember Shaffer.
And public safety did not meet these last few weeks.
Okay, uh, public works.
Public works did not meet these last.
And ad hoc committees. Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and move on to other council reports. Um, so you had events that you'd seen, et cetera. Please go ahead and, uh, now's your time to share, council. Mayor Porten?
Yeah, we had, um, a council chat yesterday and we just met in front of CCs from like eleven AM to noon. Um, Councilmember Shaffer and Napland showed up and we had one person engage with us and they're a developer in our community. And so some, I think Councilmember Napland had sent some things out to council and with Director Thomas on it as well. But a lot of interesting things, you know, that he was bringing up, like the tree ordinance and how that affects, you know, his business. Uh, frontage improvements, same, you know, scenario there. Um, also, he talked about ADUs and some issues he had run into. Um, and so I encouraged him to write down more specifics and email them in, because that really helps us collect that feedback and, and have it as a point of conversation in the future. And then actually, I forgot, toward the end, there were a couple other people, um, that I spoke with, um, that overheard what was going on. And so I chatted with them and they brought up, you know, I know there's been a shift in the school district, you know, new superintendent, and is it time to maybe start trying to collaborate and work on improving our field situations? The schools have a lot of property. They have a lot of field potential. And frankly, people don't use them because they don't want their kids breaking their ankles. Um, so is there anything we could do to encourage our SD to look at, you know, their field rental programs and anything they could do to improve that, just to help, um, to ease, you know, it was mentioned, the Big Rock ballfield parking situation's been very stressful. Uh, if you don't know what that is, just go up there around six PM on any, in a weeknight. Um, so they just mentioned that as a way of, is there any way we can ease, um, you know, demand on that field at the time? And they also brought up, because they were at the local PTSA, uh, that they'd really like to use concessions. Um, and that when they contacted staff, they were told, you know, it's not, not right now, because what they had done with the, um, the ball, they had heard about the little leak using it. And so the staff explained, well, that was a trial run, but we don't have a policy for it. So they just reiterated to me that it was really important for them to have different opportunities to fundraise. And they were like, well, if we can't use the concession stand, are we allowed to have a table out there? So, you know, I encouraged them to follow up with staff, but also on our end, if we need a policy for that, I think that, I feel that's a really important one to spotlight and probably one that wouldn't hopefully take too much time. But I know we have a lot of little things like that that can add up. So that's just kind of, um, a recap of what was talked about during our council chat. Oh, and lastly, wondering if any more Friday Night Lights were coming up. So they just asked that question. But anyways, that's about it.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Porten. And yes, um, when fields are available, we are doing Friday Night Lights. Um, so when they're not booked by, by the leads, um, we're doing what we can to keep those open to the public for recreation use. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I have an item, but before I, uh, launch into that, I just wanted to say I would be super supportive of a policy, uh, to allow usage of that facility. I think most of it would be, you know, possibly just ensuring that they don't serve items that require food handlers permit or, or things like that. So I don't know if that's something that we need to get direction on or, I don't know. I just wanted to say that I'd be very supportive of that. Um, I think having partnerships with school PTSAs and, and it's just a great amenity. I was up there during the, um, the All-Star tournament when the concession stand was open and it just, man, the kids loved it. It just created this sense of community. It gave an opportunity, you know, to volunteer. It was just fantastic. It was, it was a really neat event. So, and I think we've budgeted improvements for that quite a while ago. Um, a couple of years ago, I think it was included in the budget to, to kind of, um, do some upgrades in that concession area. But I don't even think those updates need to be done to use it, because it was already used once and it, you know, although it wasn't perfect, it was usable. So anyway, I don't know what the next step is, but I, I just wanted to say that I'm super supportive.
Policy is a matter of bandwidth and staff time. So, um, that's been discussed for a few years now and, and just have not been able to get to it due to everything else going on. Um, so that is definitely something, um, the whole intent when we bought that, uh, restroom and concession stand was to have, um, leaks be able to use it and staff it. Um, but, uh, other more important projects get in the way, uh, unfortunately. So, uh, it's still on our list of things to do.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if that's something even that our attorney could just go find us a few drafts and we could.
You still have significant staff time and public input to put those policies together. So it's not, it's not as simple as just having a policy from somewhere else.
Okay. Um, okay, so the item that I wanted to, um, bring forward was something that I had, mentioned at the last council meeting, and it was for the King County, uh, city's climate collaboration. There was an email sent out that talked about the residential energy code updates. And I promised I would go and do a little research. I attended their presentation. And I forwarded some information that was provided during that, uh, presentation, a follow-up. Um, they also provided the answer to one of my primary questions, which was, will this completely eliminate the use of gas as a fuel source for water, um, heating or space heating? And that question was answered that they do have a provision, um, to be able to use gas, but it's still for a heat pump. And, um, so I decided to do a little more research about that. I, I spoke to someone who, um, also had advocated for some different changes on the, on the policy. So I reached out to him to get more information. He, I think he works for a, a nat- natural gas, um, company down in Oregon. But, what he said is that it, it doesn't sound like that technology to do a, a gas, heat pump or a gas-water heat pump is necessary, is, is quite ready for the market yet, but will be, um, what, what I find a little difficult, and I don't know how the council feels, is for me, I think options are good for people. It's good for the consumer. It's good for the market. And this is severely limiting options. And in addition, the, the energy savings are reliant on us not getting our electricity the way it currently is, which is we burn natural gas, convert it to electricity, ship it over here, lose efficiencies and then use it. So, you know, a lot of these energy savings that we would be getting are dependent on a lot of other things that also have to happen that may or may not happen. But anyway, I, I guess what I'm, I, I don't know if we necessarily want to do anything, if we want to provide feedback. But it does appear that when you're part of the King County City's Climate Collaboration, they sort of advocate on behalf of the group and then they're allowed, you know, hey, all these cities are part of our group. And I, it does seem like they are, are very strongly supportive of this move. Um, so, we'd be possibly a little bit out on a limb to say anything different. But, um, yeah, I mean, you would no longer be able to install in a new construction. Or if you expanded your home over a certain, I think it's only like a hundred square feet or something like that. I, don't quote me on that. That you would then have to convert at that point, because now you'd be kind of, uh, new construction almost, you know, because you've increased the size. And so when you replace, if you replaced your, um, your gas furnace or your water heater and would have to size it larger, you would have to go and retrofit into a heat pump for both your water heating and your space heating. Those are, upfront costs are much higher than what's currently most people have. So I don't know how everyone else feels. It's kind of a bigger conversation. I promised to come back with information. I sent a couple emails. Um, those are my personal feelings about, um, consumer choice. And, um, I think it's, it's, it's good for the market to have choices. And this will severely limit choices. So anyway, does anyone have any feedback or?
Patient. Um, so it's, they're in the rulemaking process right now. This state law has already passed. Um, and actually, more than two thirds of our power actually already comes from hydroelectric. Um, and so less than thirty percent comes from fossil fuels at this point. Uh, so I'm not sure what information the natural gas person was sharing, but, um, that's definitely not accurate for Washington State. And that was as of two thousand seventeen. Um, and I know that that number's increased with water and solar since then. Um, but, uh, but right now it is rulemaking process. So it's a matter of how much the council wants to get involved in a rulemaking process for laws that have already passed. Um, Councilmember Isaacson?
Wait, uh, now you may ask a question, Mayor, and it is, you said laws have already passed. Have the laws been passed at the state level or were they rejected at the state level? And now this coalition is off trying to make code and regulation changes that didn't align with what the voters voted against.
There was no vote.
I mean, from the state legislation, not the citizens.
I'm pretty confident it actually passed in the legislative session.
Could I ask how we can find out? The pretty, pretty confident, the definite?
Easily, we can go to the Association of Washington Cities and they'll get that for us.
Because I, I abstained from joining that group and, and I've had a couple of people asking why. And it was because I'm opposed to taking care of our planet and the environment like that. It's, I didn't have the time to do the research on what this meant for our city. And I'm not one that votes for feel-good things. And it felt like I was voting for a feel-good thing. Um, and so far, not just from what, um, Councilmember Napland said, it bothers me a little bit, what my perception so far is what we've maybe thrust our city into, because just, another city added to a roll call of people saying this is what we should do without having any voice in opposing it. Um, or removing ourselves from it. Um, again, back to the state law, another story. If it is a state law, then, you know, people need to vote and change it. But if we put ourselves into a group that has an agenda, um, outside of what state law is, then you might want to revisit, um, with council, with our citizens, something we really want to be a part of, now that we get a better understanding of it. Because we do live in a, in a, in a city that loses electricity, um, fairly often. Um, and so now you're left with emergency heating situations with no gas. I don't know how many times in my house, in the heart of the city, I'm heating it up with a gas furnace or turning my stove on or turning my gas fireplace on, because I can't have a wood fireplace either. So, um, and it gets still cold in my house. Uh, so I only imagine the situation where we put our citizens in if we're forced into electric only. And then, God forbid, we misplan as a state, find ourselves in a situation like California recently. And when it starts getting hot and everyone's trying to run their air conditioning, we get brownouts. And we're asking people not to charge your cars, you know, things like that. So I'm just a bit reserved, because I don't have enough data to have voted to approve that, because it only felt like a feel-good thing to me. That's why I'm staying.
So they are taking actions. Um, and so being a member provides the voice at the table. Not being a member means you don't have a voice at the table at the organization.
I, true, but do we have writing somewhere that says that we actually have a voice to say no? Or are we just a voice to say, this is what we would like? Um, I don't know, and I'd like to, you know.
You absolutely do. And that's called, um, it's participating. That's why they've asked for a member and an alternate to participate in the elected officials group. Mayor Porten?
It sounds like there's enough interest in this to maybe, instead of discussing it now, just bring it to the next cow or something and spend fifteen, twenty minutes kind of just opening that can of, can of worms and, and having it out there.
Yep.
I think there might be a due date on, if you want to provide comments, I can look that up. But, um, I just, I want to send something to council, because I, I think that the mayor and I may have been talking about different statistics. But I was talking about where our energy comes from. We're Puget Sound Energy and I can send it to everyone. So in two thousand twenty, twenty-seven percent of the electricity was generated by natural gas, twenty-three percent was generated by coal. So, um, you know, that's.
Deductional.
Yeah, and then fourteen percent is unspecified, so I don't know where that's coming from. It could be also a, a fossil fuel, it's hard to say. But twenty-four percent is hydroelectric, eleven percent wind. I'll send it out. So it could be, uh, you know, Mayor Openlander was looking at something different or state, but this is, uh, PSC where yours and my electricity comes from.
Yeah, so that was statewide numbers, um, provided by the state.
Okay, would you mind sending that? Because I'd be super curious to see that too. So I sent, uh, the PFB report card. And if you could send me the state, the source of electricity, that'd be great.
Thank you. Um, all right, any other council reports? Okay, um, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, city administration update. And we'll start with Director Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Laura Thomas, thank you. Uh, we have, uh, just a handful of items to discuss this evening. Uh, the first one is the twenty-two, uh, comprehensive plan update. So as you know, uh, we start the docketing process in the fall and then we go through a soft docket process with planning commission and council that ends in usually about February. And then we create that docket of items that we're gonna look at in the comp plan. Uh, this year, due to staffing capacity both within public works and planning, we are not going to be able to complete our docket, because we don't have plans to get to you or to the state. So just as an example, and there is a memo in your file that was in the last packet, and then this packet. So an example, they're all city-initiated, so there's no risk. There's nobody out that has requested a comprehensive plan amendment um, from, you know, from a citizen or from a development group. But what we had looked at, just as an example, was where we have new parks that we've taken ownership of. This year, we were going to rezone them from their residential zoning district to essentially a parks, um, zoning district. So that is not gonna happen until next year. And we had three parks that we were looking at doing that too. And then just as an example for some public works items as well, as you know, last year, um, public works completed, um, like, you know, water comprehensive planning and, and sewer. And those need to then be, um, portions of those need to go into our comprehensive plan as policies. And that's what leads to CIPs. Our CIPs and those larger documents were approved, but they have not translated into our comp plan. And this evening was actually a great, um, conversation as well, because we talked about the larger transportation, um, plan versus the transportation element. So, you know, it is disappointing for us, but it, it really was a staff capacity issue. And I wanted just to make sure that you understood, um, it's the first time that's happened in twenty years, so we will need to watch that. It's not something you want to see consistently. But I will also say, we are one of the only cities that consistently dockets every year as well. A lot of cities will take a year or two off. Um, and then only dock it every couple of years. Um, capital facilities are allowed to be done more than once a year. So if capacity does, you know, shine, um, after some hiring within public works and planning, then we could always look at least at doing a small docket, couple facilities. But we're already out with our next, um, docket process. And so those will be due, um, late fall and then we'll be docketing. So these will be docketed again um, for two thousand twenty-three, at the same time that we are scoping and docketing for our two thousand twenty-four comp plan update. So I just wanted to give you that update. Um, a quick update on the Housing Needs Assessment and Action Plan. So as we remember, we have our valley-wide housing needs assessment. Um, that's going, it's going pretty well. It is a little bit behind schedule. We did have a meeting with the consultant, um, which is, well, Blue Line and LDC. Um, which is Bull Blue Line and L D C. They're supposed to have a report to us last week. I haven't seen it, so I have an email in. To Nora Ben, who is our project manager for that project. But I do know it's underway because I did talk to Blue Line last week and they're part of that co-consultant team. We also had a kickoff meeting for our local housing needs assessment and action plan. Last week with Blue Line and so here in about a week and a half, you'll see an email from me. We're going to be doing a community survey. So we'll push it out through social media, our website, and I'm hoping if we get it in time, we can put it in our utility building as well. Um, I will uh give you a preview, obviously, of the questions and allow some sort of, you know. Uh, informational, you know, kind of response back if you see something that maybe we're missing. Uh, Planning Commission will be looking at it as well at their next meeting. Uh, so it's exciting. We're moving forward. I do worry that we're not going to need some of our deadlines with the state, so we've already talked a little bit about. That. The consultants are also having staffing capacity issues and so it's just it's a bottleneck right now. But I think we're going to make up some time because we're uh we got a good kickoff for our local portion of it. Um, the city facilities reopening projects with Steve out this evening, we're going to go and push that one to the next um to the next meeting. Um, we have one additional, actually two additional items. Uh, and I'm not sure if Dana, I can't see Dana, Mayor. But she was just going to talk about the revenue projections really quick that are going to come to council here next week.
Okay, um, hold on here. She is on.
Okay.
Director Mason.
Okay, there I did it unmuted. Um, so the uh per R C W, the mayor needs to send to council um. Revenue projections. We already went through the estimates in a at a meeting in July, so this will just be. Revenue estimates with a. A trending information from the prior biennium, the current biennium, and then the. The the upcoming biennium.
Thank you, Dana, and we have one more item there and that's just the scheduling of the city council retreat. Clark is going to talk to us about that.
And uh one one company responded, a very qualified company though, uh more than thirty years' experience. Um, business is in Mill Creek and I think one of their employees is a Duval resident. Um, they have extensive experience with cities. Um, City of Olympia, Seattle City Light, King County, it's a long list. And um. So uh me and Amy McHenry and Laura met as kind of a committee and we talked to the consultant communications Northwest. About the retreat and kind of because their cost was very high and we whittled down the scope to something more reasonable. Um, which is about six thousand dollars. Um, and the purpose of the retreat is team cohesion and function. Um, communication, team building and um. Yeah, they're good, but you know, we don't know the agenda yet. They're gonna do some interviews with the council and the mayor and um. Plan the agenda, do some pre-meeting research to sort of to look at the issues and define, you know, what uh what would be most productive. For the council at the retreat. And uh and I think the the idea is that staff would also be invited, uh director staff. Um, to uh. For communication and team building and um. So we talked to the consultant about which dates they might be available and they said October eighth or October. Twenty nine. And that would be a Saturday and we really felt like it would be important. Uh, for you guys to have that time away from this normal setting in more of a relaxed um realm. That's. When these are going to be most productive. So um. So the plan was, uh, I I've talked to everybody, tried to reach out to all of you. I haven't heard back from everybody. Um, it seemed like for most people, the eighth or the twenty ninth would work. Um, but then I think I heard back from Ron Mercer just this morning that the eighth was not going to work for him. So and um I think the eighth wasn't going to work for Dana. Thank or or John, okay.
Yeah, and and not for me, sir. I apologize if I didn't get back to you. Twenty ninth would work.
Okay, so like from nine AM to three was the thought. And have lunch and um. Was looking at different venues and I think, I don't know if it was Laura or Steve, it suggested. Uh, the Ridge at Big Rock just completed a new clubhouse and I was looking at it and it seems nice. So I called them. I haven't heard back yet, but um. Anyway. So uh, yeah, so that's the report and it sounds like so it'll be October the twenty ninth and. That doesn't work, okay. Um, I think the other option was to maybe have it broke broken up into like two night meetings or something and. I don't know if that wasn't the preferred alternative, but. We've got a lot of other stuff working on to work on with budget and everything, so.
Can I ask you a question? I don't remember if we talked about a hybrid option. Did we talk about that? I was just curious and I don't know if that would work for you. I, Annie Mason.
Possibly, depends on what time.
If there was a call in, not for, or do we have, it does have to be open in the public, right? Yeah, so maybe that would be possibly a good thing to have too, or?
Yeah, I think that that is a good idea. We we make that happen. Okay.
Just the terms and I'll tell you what terms on them.
I'm sorry.
When you settle on the times, I'll find out what times on them and see if I can make it, or at least for someone.
Okay. All right.
Great, thank you. Um, moving on, we do not have any public hearings and we have one item of unfinished business, Agenda Bill twenty-two dash eighty-three. Agenda for the twenty twenty-two Community Forest Re Grant Agreement for Discussion, Director Thomas.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council again this evening. Uh, this was a really honestly an exciting opportunity to apply for a grant for some work. That we've been wanting to do for a couple of years, which is to do uh essentially a minor check-in on our tree protection standards. Which comes at a good time. Um, we're I probably about four years into implementation. So we've internally identified um some issues. Um, so that's one of the items that we would be looking at under this grant. We'd also be looking at doing our first um city tree list. Which I know sounds unusual, but we use the city of Seattle and what works in Seattle doesn't necessarily work. In Duval, we'd also be looking at making some minor changes to our landscape code as well. For soil amendments, tree protection and getting, you just getting trees to actually survive here can be a challenge post-construction. So it's pretty targeted. The dollar amount is fairly small, fifteen thousand, you know, might sound like a lot for. You know, a contract, but it doesn't go that far. However, we will be having a city match as well, so we will be internally. As staff working jointly with our harvest. We will also be working with public works, so we're going to be doing training with public works on tree trimming and care of our. City tree canopy, whether it's on Main Street. Or it's in the park. So we're really excited doing this work. We have to get it done by next June because that's when the grant um is over. So uh we're excited honestly to start this work. We've wanted to do it in the department for a while. I wish I could say we could, you know, update both our landscape and our tree protection, you know, uh in a broad way because it really does need it. But we're going to do some targeted changes. If you can't make something big happen, then go after the small targeted pieces and that's what we're going to start to do moving forward. You know, this is just kind of maybe a first table setting to some other policy updates over the next two years.
Any questions from council?
You you said this, Laura, but uh the uh, I know Land Use Committee has has briefly discussed the updating of the treaty. Tree policy here in Duval. That's something really, I I obviously staff time is needed for that. Uh, but it's not really covered by this grant per se. Is that correct?
Actually, a portion of it is. We're going to do some targeted changes to the tree protection standards. But it's not going to be a full rewrite, obviously.
Got it, got it. Very targeted. Okay, okay, no, it's good.
Yeah. Okay. Um, we talked about the tree inventory. Is that the an inventory of trees that are on city properties or is that an inventory of, you know, the tree canopy?
Um, it, we're going to have to see how far we can go and what kind of like wide our data and stuff that we have. Because our, that technical piece is really small, so we're probably going to have to narrow it down. To and to one or two or maybe even three areas. And we, what we might look at is do an inventory of just our main street trees. What do they look like and make some targeted orders? Like it could be, you know, Big Rock Road, it could be Main Street. Um, we do have some tree issues on Main Street that we're concerned about. I don't know if anybody noticed. But we lost some of our beautiful street trees at the north end of town. And so just starting to kind of get a handle on that. You know, one thing that we do have also is that we're collecting money in our tree mitigation fund. So one of the things that I'm going to. Um, that I do have actually planned as part of this grant is to start looking at um a policy on, you know, how to use those dollars. Um, moving forward.
Just one, one thing that we have talked about in land use, I think it was land use, we. Um, we had had a conversation about, because you were on Public Works Committee, that there are certain areas in the city that. Really don't have very many trees and and could use some trees and it would, you know, provide some needed shade and and just would kind of beautify. In some areas and I promised you I was going to give you the targeted spots that I had noticed. And I actually have a file of pictures with those spots that I need to send them to you, but it just occurred to me. That not just inventory the trees, but maybe come up with some targeted areas where we could use those mitigation funds where it would be put to good use, like I. Think two seventy fifth this year coming down to Big Rock on the right. There are trees all along that beautiful sidewalk and it's just kind of a hot bear area. You know, I think it would be amazing to put some street trees in there. Um, anyway, just an idea. I don't know. I don't want to e- expand scope further, but it just gets you really excited.
Fifteen thousand dollars usually doesn't even cover one code. And so it's going to be doing a little bit of, it's going to be uncomfortable, but even for staff because we're going to hit some targeted areas.
Yeah.
But we can come back this next year and apply for more money under this program and honestly. We could have done just a tree inventory or we could do, or we could have done some of the targeted things and we felt strongly departmentally. That we wanted to start with some of the targeted items. So maybe next year we, you know, shift focus and do one thing that's, you know, that's larger.
Our mitigation funds, can they only be used for planting new trees or can you use them? Okay, so it can't be to do something that helps keep. An existing tree healthy.
I will look at our code, but it's pretty specific in our tree protection. We have to be careful. In fact, that's why we're going to create a policy. Because Steve and I are talking and I'm looking at this next biennium budget, you know, we can replace dead dying disease trees. We can care for trees. And if we plant a new tree, we can follow that that tree with mitigation money, with the mitigation money for three to five years. So for care, water, um pruning.
Yeah.
So, but it it is a little bit limited. It's it's not a, I'll call it a free for all.
Specifically, I was thinking of, um, I'm trying to think of where, I'm sure there were some grapes. That are, the trees are starting to outgrow the openings, so maybe they need a new plate around them or something on sidewalks and then. I always think of the sequoias by Safeway and pavement that's choking them and I know we kind of had a plan to like start partially relieving them. Um, of that, but I don't know, like that maybe sounds way outside the scope of what mitigation.
Yes, a little bit, yeah, for especially for not planting anything new. And I know that we have, Mayor, had that on our list for a while. And there's been like this, kind of I'll call it pro-life con statement of like, you should remove the asphalt, you shouldn't remove it or you should do it a little bit at a time. And so maybe it's something that we could, you know, pick up. Um, as part of a tree inventory and assessment as part of another grant cycle.
Not to keep dragging that, so, but something that comes to my mind too when I was on Planning Commission. And we had some rezoning and everything and one of the challenges we ran into was tree protection program zoning and meeting code and density and stuff like that. I think it was you, Jennifer, at one point said something, and you just mentioned the word again, canopy. Um, which is very important when you get tree protection. Unfortunately, where tree protection programs written in the way the developer looks at it. Is going totally different. Um, and so we've seen that happen here. I'm sure that people who did the tree protection program, you see what happened. Like, how did that happen with our tree protection program? So I don't know if this one or future grants, an idea to throw out, just putting everyone's mind around is. You know, when we put a tree protection program together, have a developer look at it with a critical eye and say, what would you do with this one piece of property? Let them tell you how they're going to do it. And they tell you they're going to do a lot of everything people who build a tree protection program. And then continue to work a tree protection program because the developer is going to say they care, but really what they care the most about is the money. So you're going to get over and over and over saying that you go look at tree farm areas where you got so many trees per cut and you just get this little. Pulp of trees and they've met the code.
Yeah, it's a community value.
It is.
It's a policy choice, you know, by our community. And if we put the policies together correctly and we zone the areas where maybe we have more exceptional trees. Or, you know, especially exceptional, because those aren't really supposed to come out except or by exception. Um, then I think we would have better success. So, yeah, we definitely realized. When an area got zoned higher density and it was like the most concentration of exceptional trees in the city. So I I do really believe that council did the right thing, which was to put a pause on it and downzone it.
Thank you. Um, Director Thomas, do you need a motion on this this evening?
That would be most excellent, Mayor.
Would somebody be willing to make a motion?
Councilman Rising would. I can get to the. Thing here that's written. Like a mo- a motion to, I'm moved to approve, you know, Bill twenty-two dash eighty-three, a sense of grant agreement for the state of Washington Department of Natural Resources. Two thousand twenty-two Community Forestry Assistant Grant Program for eighteen thousand or fifty thousand.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Um, and for Councilmember Nafan, I did find a point of clarification. Uh, you are correct, the bill did not pass in in this session. It did end up in rules for the residential. However, um, I'm sending information to council about the uh bill that was passed in twenty nineteen. That requires all utilities to have a hundred percent of their electricity generation from renewable. Or non-emission-based sources by twenty twenty-five. So um even without that bill passing, uh, just that's something to pay close attention to because uh with that law now in effect. It will uh require major changes to um codes um and requirements on. Um, heating for homes. So just folks, take a look at that um and uh decide if you want to provide comment on that. So, thank you. All right, and with that, we do not have any new business and we don't have an executive session, so unless there are objections, we are adjourned.
Thanks.